And if you lean that way, just keep going.
Good evening. Will we have anyone from the public that would like to offer a prayer before we go into pledge in the meeting? Anyone? Okay. If not, let us stand for a moment of silent meditation followed by the pledge.
I'll make the prayer.
Sure. Okay, please.
Dear Father, God, and Lord, we just love you and we just thank you for your industry with this, God. We ask that you be with each and every one of us in need and God has taught us how to help us to follow you in everything, Lord, and we love you, we praise you, and thank you for all the blessings you've given us and this holy God. Thank you for just everything you do for us in your name, I pray.
Our pledge is to survive under the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the Monday, March the 2nd, 2020 School Board Meeting. And firstly, we will have a presentation. I want to do it healthier. Healthier U.S. School Challenge Award Presentation.
Okay, I'm going to read this and then I'll make the presentation. The Healthier U.S. School Challenge Smarter Lunchroom is a voluntary certification initiative recognizing those schools enrolled in teen nutrition that has created healthier school environments through promotion of smarter lunchrooms, nutrition, and physical activity. Schools receiving this Healthier School USA Challenge Smarter Lunchrooms Award will commit to meeting the criteria throughout their four-year certification period. Recognized schools will receive a plaque made on with a certificate signed by the Secretary of Agriculture, a banner, recognition of the teen nutrition website, and a monetary incentive. Now, this award will be going only to the middle school. It's only for elementary school and is not for high school. Had the high school participated, I'm sure they would have been a recipient of this award. Okay? And these school cafeterias will receive like $1,000 each for earning their civil award. The money will be used to enhance the school cafeterias. And as I pass this out to the cafeteria managers, I want our food service manager to come up here with me. Thank you, Ms. Harris. And the part reads, "The school is recognized as USDA Healthier USA School Civil Level July 2018 through July 2022. On its leadership role in implementing a healthier school nutrition environment and it is signed by Sunny Doody." Our first recipient is Lee Elementary School. Okay. And this is the principal, Mr. Brandon Brown, and our manager.
Angela.
And Ms. Angela Matthews. Okay, turn around. We're all on camera. Thank you very much. Okay, our next award goes to Green Bay Elementary School. With the principal and the manager, please come up. At Green Bay Elementary, we have Ms. Jaredine Wild, who's the principal, and Ms. Katila Young is the food service manager. Thank you very much. Our next award goes to Madison County Central School. Okay, Mr. Williams was not able to attend, but we have Ms. Kathy Dyer, who is the cafeteria manager. And my last award, not our last school, but last school, I'm seeing a lot of students, Pineapple Elementary School. Okay. Okay. That was Martha Davis, his favorite kid, who was my age, and Katina. And thank you very much. Thank you for doing a superb job.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to all. Next, we have the Restorative Justice Initiative Presentation.
We have Mr. Dale Landry coming up, and he will do us a brief presentation.
First of all, I want to say thank you, Mr. Chairman and School Board members, and you also, Madam Superintendent. If I may ask a question, did we get them?
They have all of the habit on their devices.
All right. So what I'll do is, since you have the information, I won't go back over all of that, but I'll be very brief as it relates to what the Restorative Justice Initiative that will be bringing into the community. I was asked by your superintendent to look at putting together a restorative justice plan, in-depth plan, to work with your school district. I've been working with restorative justice since 1998, both on a national level as well as here within the state of Florida. And I was involved back in 2007 when the state changed legislation reference to reducing the amount of kids that were being expelled and kicked out of schools behind zero tolerance rules. And as a matter of fact, they came back and took zero tolerance back where it was supposed to be, because zero tolerance was only supposed to be working with kids that were with weapons in school and drugs. But what had happened was, it got, it just got out of control, and all of a sudden, we turned around and all discipline in schools were being hammered by law enforcement officers, which ultimately led to several school districts being the first ones that are being the gateway for many kids coming into the juvenile justice system. And many of those charges were small, like misdemeanor offenses, but kids were getting records. And what happened was, on the back end, many of these kids, on the front end, these were, when it happened, they didn't realize the long-term impact it was going to have, because the long-term impact came was that many of these young kids that were 13 and 14 got arrested in school for disorderly conduct. When they turned 18, could not go into the military because they had a criminal record. And that was one of the major reasons why they turned around and came back, because so many of these kids, at one time, when they spoke back to a teacher, spoke back to an administrator, that they got arrested. And as a result of that arrest for disorderly conduct, those kids were damaged. So what they came back and said were, school districts needed to go back down and relook at their discipline program. And one of the things they recommended was restorative justice. So the superintendent reached out and asked me, because I have been working with this, as I said, for many years. I currently am working at Griffin Middle School in Leon County. We initially had it going to implement countywide for a lot of different reasons that never happened. And as I was getting ready to stand down when the district, my contract went out with the district, the principal at Griffin Middle School told me, "You're not going anywhere. I need you, and I'm on contract with you as Title I, and let you come in and work and continue to work." And I've been working at Griffin since 2013. And within the model, it's a restorative model, but more importantly, I built in mind, because I'm a social worker, I have social work interns that come in and work and do case management with the kids that are referred to our program, and we're hoping to come and design the same model that will bring interns in to add more staffing at very minimal cost. And so, to that extent, what will be implemented is a restorative justice model. It is community-based, it's built on community, because what we wind up doing is, every school is in a neighborhood or connected to a community. We need to get community members to become more actively involved. And through this process that we've worked in the past, we've often seen a major increase where community members step in. And they sit at the school, working with the school district, and working with the schools that they're working in, they form what's called boards. And then through these boards, this is what many kids will get referred to. And in this process, we work with our kids to help them become accountable for what they have done. We help them to develop skills to help them stop continuing that same behavior and find more positive behaviors. And the third thing we do is we work with them to become more positive members of the community, both the school community as well as the community from whence they're from. So the bottom line is, this first part is to come in and help design the model and help build the model. And the model needs to be unique to Madison County. It needs to be unique, it needs to be unique to Madison County, then it also needs to be unique to its school. Certain things in it should go across all schools as it relates to discipline in general. But then, as we start working down at the, at the school level, where we have the community, for instance, and you please forgive me, we have a town that asks, "I do know you have one community as Lee, I do know you have one community as Greenville," and you've got various different communities. But what you start having is the people of those communities start coming back in and identifying and working with their schools. Closing in a nutshell, we're really getting ready to do something that you all, well, I'm going to be careful. Let me say that I grew up with, because I'm an Asian myself, all right? I recently celebrated the, I'm thinking, I'm getting ready to celebrate the 40th anniversary of my 25th birthday. I stopped having birthdays when I was 25. So I'm getting ready to celebrate the 40th anniversary of that 25th birthday. So that pretty much puts you in the ballpark. But back in that era, our schools were neighborhood schools. When I grew up, our schools were places we could go to, and as a matter of fact, we used to have activities at the schools even in the evening. As we start doing this, the community, what we're hoping to see is this community will start evolving. And I, I'm not hoping I know it'll happen, because you have it there. When I would go to school, my grandmother would get involved, and you have grandmothers still in our communities. We have good parents still in our communities. Granted, we have some parents that may need a little help, but guess who's best to hold them accountable? The community. Because they will turn around and come back and call on the past and say, "No, we're not going to tolerate that, and we need to change these behaviors, and we need to come in and work together to help fix it so that our schools can be safe, productive, as well as minimize the number of kids that we're having to expel and put out and suspend from school." Because once we do that, we're not helping our community, it actually becomes less safer, because who's in the neighborhood to watch the kids while everybody's at work? So I, I mean, I could go on a whole lot, it's much broader, but as the superintendent said, I have five minutes, but if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Let me ask you something. Have you been successful with getting the parents on board?
In places we've been, yes, we have. Yes, we have. Because here's what happens. Parents have a responsibility by law to do certain things. Once you tell the community what that is, and once they can identify that, hey, yes, they have to do this, they have to come. Then at that point, you start seeing the community putting pressure. You see, because other members of the community, because what happens is, you can't run to them and say for help, because the reality of it is, they are there, they see what the kid has done, they have been sitting there, and they hold the kids accountable. And they work, and I don't want to say they hold the kid accountable, the kid's got to accept accountability. Because see, our system right now with punishment, there's no accountability. All I got to do is do whatever you tell me to do. I don't have to say I did right or wrong. You're the one that's deciding punishment. I don't participate, so I don't have accountability. I just do what you tell me to do and just keep quiet. But in restorative justice, no, you've got to sit down and talk about what you did, and you've got to share what went wrong, you see? And you've got to be ready to apologize, and you've got to be ready to do whatever you can to fix what you did wrong, to the best of your ability.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So our next step, Ms. Joseph, is setting up a contract or?
Okay, we've got the, the contract on here.
Okay.
One other thing that he failed to mention, we have started this process because we met with law enforcement today.
Good.
Trying to get them on, because it will be a community effort, and we've got the different facets of the community that's going to come together and make this one whole thing. And we met with the Sheriff Department and the Police Department today.
Good. Good. I like that.
And we met with your school, your school administrators.
Yes. Yes, we've met the school administrators and principals, we've met with them also. But we want to have a good foundation so that when we build, we won't have to worry about having a weak link.
Right. And that everybody understands what, what we're trying to do and that.
We are using this semester to put the systems in place, and we're going to implement it within the schools after, meeting with the teachers possibly in, in the fall.
And this is all schools, all children then?
Yes, ma'am.
And Madam Superintendent, if I may, I think one of the things that we had talked about was, in the fall, we'll start with one school, or we can go with all, but I think we were saying we start with one school to tweak out the issues.
The first semester we will.
And then in the second semester, be ready to go full thing with all schools.
Sounds good. Sound reasonable.
That's great.
I think that's a good idea.
Sounds good. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking forward to working with you.
Same. Same, yeah, I appreciate it.
You too.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is regarding, maybe we'll go ahead and amend the agenda, we've got to place these two somewhere, not, not, just, place them down in number five.
Okay. Okay, we have two amendments to the agenda. One will be the, in reference to the presentation just presented, the Restorative Justice Training Project. We'll pull that down to the items for individual consideration, that'll be item 5.1A. And also, we have Behavior Management Contract, and that'll be item 5.2A. All right, do we have any comments from the public? No comments, okay? Item four, consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Probably moved by Mr. Alford, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Do we, would there be a need for discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried, five, zero. Items for individual consideration, student field trips out of county, Ms. Joseph.
Okay, we have several trips. Our first trip is Madison County High School Access Class to McClay Gardens. That's a day trip on two, on April 22nd, that's paid for out of the class account. We have a Lee Elementary School gifted students to Georgia Aquarium on April 9th and 10th, that's an overnight trip. The chaperones will be properly vetted and the proper clearance, and that's being paid for out of donations. We have Pioneer Elementary School kindergarten classes going to the Challenger Learning Center on March 11th, that's paid for out of donations. Pioneer Elementary kindergarten class is also going to the Tallahassee Museum on May 1st, and that's the fundraisers. Pioneer is busy. Their first grade classes going to Jefferson County Humane Society on March 12th, that's being paid for by the students. The high school students, they're doing the science fair, and that's an overnight trip, and that's being paid for out of the science grant. And again, those chaperones will be properly vetted. The high school students going to Tampa to the Holocaust Museum, and that's a day trip that's being paid for out of Title I. And the Beta Club is going to Flagler College on April 3rd, and that's a self-paid trip. Those are the trips that's up for approval.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the student field trips out of county?
I move to approve the student field trips out of county. Second.
Probably moved, and second, would there be a need for discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carried, five, zero. Item 5.1A, the Restorative Justice Initiative.
Okay, Mr. Landry just gave a presentation on that, and the training part, that's being paid for out of a CENET grant that we had to use to target behavior.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve the, the program.
Second.
Probably moved, and seconded, do we, would there be a need for discussion? All in favor? Oppose? No oppose, five, zero.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, you got, in this project write-up, it's not in the form of a contract in that it has for signature blocks or anything, and I'm presuming in your motion, though, you're authorizing the chair and the superintendent to sign a contract on these terms, so they don't have to bring it back to you. Is that accurate?
The thing is, it didn't have a signature block on it, but you did have your budget page in there.
Okay. 5.2 Staff Trips.
Okay, 5.2 Staff Trips. We have two staff trips. Dr. Barbara Pettiford, I have a trip tomorrow to Tampa. That's Advanced Ed, which is really consigo. Next year is the year for us for district accreditation, and this will be her first go-around as lead facilitator for this project, and we're bringing her up to speed. Okay, on October, on March 5th, I will be going down to Orlando, which is Thursday, the Brian Dashler Leadership Academy. They are having a promotional graduation exercise, and we do have one person that's completing that program, and that's Rod Williams, and I will be going down to that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the staff trips?
I made the motion to approve the staff trips.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Bell, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Would there be a need for discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carried, five, zero. Staff trips approved. 5.2, which will be the Behavior Management Contract, Ms. Joseph.
Okay, 5.2A, the Behavior Management Contract, again, this will be paid completely out of our DEA CCIS fund. It will provide services for general ed and special ed students for the remainder of the school year, and it's a behavior specialist we're paying to come in. And it's only for the rest of the year, so that's why we've got to get it done now, because we don't have that much time left in the school year.
Mr. Chairman, I looked at it, I could not find where it said the term, the end of the term.
Oh.
And so I think if we just add a phrase right at the end that says, from, the term will be from the date of execution through June 30th, I think we'll be fine, and then that would, that would cover us there.
Okay.
June 30th, 2020, obviously. But I think if the board wishes, you could approve it with that change.
Is today the date of execution? Today will be?
Well, have, have they performed any services already?
No, they have not performed any services.
Yeah.
But we want them to start before the next board meeting, so that's why I had to bring it, and so they will probably start the week after spring break.
But what I would do is I'd add from the terms March 2, 2020, to June 30, 2020.
Okay.
And then normally, what we put is that either party can terminate on 30 days' notice to the other.
Okay.
And then that, that kind of covers it.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve the contract with the Behavior Management Consultants. With the contract going from March the 2nd, 2020, through to the 30th, 2020, and either party may terminate the contract with 30 days' notice.
30 days' notice to the other party.
To the other party.
Second.
Okay, properly moved, and seconded, would there be a need for discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Five, zero, motion carried. The contract for the Behavior Management will be adopted. Item 5.3, Waypoint Charter Academy. Mr. Killingsworth or Ms.?
Okay.
Ms. Joseph.
We approve Waypoint's charter on August 5th, 2019. They have made some amendments, they would like to make some amendments to the charter, and I know y'all emailed the entire charter, but Ms. Miller is here to highlight the additions.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for allowing us the opportunity to come speak on behalf of our organization and the changes we've made to the charter. We took into consideration some of the feedback that was given us last year and wanted to work and take the work we've been doing with our youth so far as a satellite school and improve on that. One of the main areas that you're going to see is our CTE programming has changed, as well as we've consulted with Mr. Killingsworth and Captain Andrews regarding our school safety plan. That's going to be Section 19 in the charter application. We've spoken extensively with, again, with Killingsworth, as well as Mr. Sam Stahlmaker for consultation on our CTE programming. Initially, it was going to be kind of more of a work-based program. What we're actually going to be implementing is a web development program. We're going to be following the scope and sequence outlined by DOE, and we're going to give our youth the opportunity to learn some critical skills that are integral to the 21st century learners.
How many CTE programs will you be starting?
We're going to be starting with just our web development. We want to ensure that we really perfect one before we build into a bunch of others.
How many students are you?
Are we looking to serve within the year or currently?
Currently.
Currently, we're at 12 youth. That, the numbers can change as we get more bed space.
Mr. Chairman, remember, this is the one we approved last year, but then we had some issues with getting the charter upon building and getting the school number and all that. So you've actually approved this charter, I think, and that's why you don't have before you the charter review instrument and all that kind of stuff. They've given you the, the changes that they're wanting to make to the application in this email. I think what, what you do is, if you find those changes acceptable, what you do is you do a motion to approve the changes to the charter, since it's already been approved. I believe last year, we went ahead, we provided a charter contract. I think we've gotten that far, if I'm not mistaken. And so, you know, what, what would probably be the best would be if y'all could take that document and add these things, how y'all want to address that in that document, send it back, and then if you all approve the changes to the application, that can go ahead. And then the next step is the charter contract, we can get that done, and this time, we'll be well, well ahead of any deadlines or benchmarks.
Yes.
So tonight, if y'all find these changes acceptable, you do a motion on a second to approve amending the application to include these changes.
Okay. On that note, do we have a motion to approve the?
I move to approve the changes for the Waypoint, Waypoint Charter Academy. I move to approve the changes for the Waypoint Charter Academy.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion properly moved, and a second, would there be a need for discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Five zero, motion carried. Changes adopted.
So if y'all can, go ahead and send back the charter contract. And like I said, we can get that done way before time is up.
Thank you. Okay, item 5.4, best and brightest policy. Ms. Jo- Ms. Joseph.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we've seen this before several times, and it says public hearing. Okay, it has been advertised the noted amount of days.
Okay. All right, well, we'll open it now to the public. Would there be anyone from the public who would like to address the issue concerning the best and brightest policy? Okay. All right. We don't have anyone who would like to address that, the issue, so the, we will close the, this portion of the meeting to the public. And we will address the issue. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the best and brightest policy.
Second.
Okay. So motion on the floor by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Would there be a need for discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Five zero. The policy has been adopted. All right, 5.5, staffing table. Mr. Blue.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, we did make some changes to our staffing table. We had some assets funds from our Title I account that we needed to spend. So what we basically did was we moved some of our employees from general fund, and we moved them to Title I. Uh, we did it at Madison County High School, where we had 28 minus 2. And we moved that to Title I, which gave us 3. And with Greenville Elementary School, we had four that was moved, and we moved them to Title I. That gave us 5. So I ask for the board to please approve the staffing table, 5.5.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the staffing table.
Second.
Have a motion, and second, would there be a need for discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Five zero, staffing table, it's been approved.
Thank you.
Okay. 5.6, personnel changes.
All right, 5.6, I would like for the board to please approve our volunteers list, please.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the volunteer list?
I move to approve the volunteer list.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the volunteer list by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Bell. Would there be a need for discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried, five zero, volunteers approved.
Also, for item 5.6, I'd like for the board to approve the personnel changes, please.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the personnel changes?
I make the motion to approve the personnel changes.
Second.
All right, properly moved, and seconded, would there be a need for discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Five zero, motion carried. Personnel changes approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blue.
All right, item. Let's see, 6.1, superintendent items.
Okay, I guess Ms. Evely has something to say to the board, and I can get it from her.
All right, Ms. Evely.
Good evening. When we last met in February, I mentioned the fact that food service was having a problem. And since that time, I've been able to go through and pull everything for food services. And it's not as I presented at that time. But my information were based upon the information I had been given. And, and then I found out I hadn't gotten all the information I needed to make that, uh, that statement. So since, and I, I've done some things, and I'm continuing to look at food services every day because I tell you, it is very important that our children get to eat every day. That would make some of them come to school just to get those meals, so that they can say, "I got it." And we want to keep them happy. Our students are our number one priority. And nobody else, I'm sorry, adults, but our students count. And I love them, because when you got a full belly, you got a, a good mind. And I just want to apologize again for making that statement, but like I said, I was new on the job. I had only been here a little while. And I didn't have all the information. But now that I have access to that information, I'm able to keep up with what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Evely. It takes a big person to acknowledge that, uh, we're all human. Okay, um, a couple of things. On your, at your seat, you find a sheet about water management. And I just put that there because you keep hearing on the news that the Swan River still having problem. But every week, they're testing the water at Pineapple School, and that's the latest report. So the water at Pineapple School is good.
Good.
For now.
And so we'll, we'll keep you informed on that, but, uh, yes, we're on top of that. Um, our basketball team, we, uh, I need to congratulate both teams. Neither one of the, the girls made it to the playoffs. They lost last Tuesday in Lakeland, but they did a fantastic job. The boys didn't make it to Lakeland, but they did a fantastic job. Both of those games were superb. Okay, uh, our latest, I'm going to pass this down. Our latest topic has been coronavirus, coronavirus. We're on top of that. We've got some concerns. I'm not a health service professional, but we've got assets on this and how we're dealing with it. People are waiting on us to make a statement, but I cannot make an uninformed statement. So tomorrow, we have set up a meeting with the health department, emergency management department, and whoever else wants, we're going to, and we're going to be talking with our insurance company because we need to know where we progress from here. And so with all those at the table, we will come out with a statement. I got, um, an email from FADS, and they're having a conference call on Wednesday also. And so where we are, I don't know. One of the schools contacted me and was concerned about a field trip that they had planned. And I didn't want to be hasty in making a decision, but a group of second graders are going to Legoland and want to know should they cancel that. And I said, "I can't make that call without input from others." But you may be getting calls later on, and the parents may have to make that decision. But we are looking at it from all angles.
Ms. Joseph, just have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
In that meeting tomorrow, what time is it?
It's at 2:00.
2:00, okay. Here, okay. And I'm sure, or I'm assuming that many of the local, uh, government representatives will also be present.
Okay, I have invited the health department and their representatives, and the person from the emergency management, Lee Reagan, that's who I can call out.
Yes, sir.
Best, least, okay. And they, they may bring representatives with them because this is a short notice. I just ask them to bring who they wish. And we will have other school adminis-, uh, district administrators present.
Any questions or anything concerning this particular issue from anybody on the board?
I think we're on top of things as far as that goes.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Mr. Reeves.
Yes, sir, we, uh, you all may have gotten a letter, or a copy of a letter, from an attorney dealing with the Rite of Passage organization. Um, I wanted to talk to you all a little bit about that. Rite of Passage was a vendor that was providing services to the school district. Um, and the, uh, they were providing those services dealing with, providing educational services to children. Rite of Passage, the way the contract was set out, was Rite of Passage was to receive a certain, was invoice and receive a certain amount of money every month or every quarter. But at the end of the time, at the end of the contract, we would go back and adjust so that the total amount that they were to receive was 92% of the FTE of the students they serve. Now, and this all started before the superintendent got here and all that. Now, what, where we are now is they have demanded the total amount of the money that they've invoiced. They're not do that. What they're doing is 92% of the FTE. This contract, oh, and I'm sorry, I'm not giving you enough information. This contract was over June 30, 2019. So this is, this contract's not a presently, uh, not, not a present contract. At any rate, um, we had an email to superintendent. We're trying, we're going to need to get those numbers together on the 92% of the FTE. They've made a demand that they're going to file suit unless we respond by March 11. So that's a week from Wednesday, and so we're going to try to get together this week and get those numbers together where we can respond to them. And as to what we think we actually do owe them, which is that 92% of the FTE figure. But anyway, we're proceeding with that.
But we are in the process of gathering the information. And in-house, we are going to have a meeting on Wednesday, so we can get something to you by Friday.
Thank you, ma'am. That's just what we need. So, but anyway, that, that's what that letter was about.
Okay.
And so I don't have anything else unless y'all have questions with me.
Okay. All right, Ms. Gibson.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Mrs. Iris Nguyen and all the cafeteria staff for what you do each and every day. You are appreciated. Um, I attended some wonderful programs at Madison County Central School and Greenville Elementary concerning the Black History Month this past week. I enjoyed a character day at Pineapple Elementary School. And I look forward to a Read Around the World at Central tomorrow night. And I'd also like to congratulate the basketball teams on their wonderful season.
Okay, Ms. Williamson.
Yes. I'd like to thank Ms. Nguyen and all our lunchroom managers and their staff for providing the nutritious, healthy lunches that they do for our children every day. And according to my youngest granddaughter and one of her little friends in a conversation I overheard, they're good, too. So we thank y'all very much.
Ms. Bell.
Yes, I would like to say thank you for all y'all do. Y'all do a wonderful job. Just keep up the good work. To the cafeteria staff. And I also would like to say congratulations to the basketball team on a wonderful season.
All right, Mr. Alford.
Um, I'd like to congratulate the high school, um, boys and girls basketball program for their successful year this year. Um, tomorrow evening, I will also be attending the Read Around the World at Central and participating in some form in it with Ms. Gibson, I think. Um, I also would like to thank Ms. Joseph at this time for all that she's doing and continues to do for the district with everything that she's handling that we don't know about. She's going, she's doing a great job. Um, I would like to acknowledge the food service, Ms. Nguyen, for all they do. All the food managers at Lee, Greenville, Central, and Pineapple for their award they received tonight. I want to thank food service back a year ago, when we went through all of our financial issues. Food service did, um, come and help us out with money that they had in their program that helped the district out, where it was able to take off some of the, um, brunt that we were facing from, from bills we had that she was able to absorb, Ms. Nguyen was. So I do appreciate that, and thank you.
Okay. I also like to congratulate the food service staff, Ms. Nguyen, and all, all of the staff. I, I agree. You do a wonderful job. You are a major part of, of the school district in keeping the district going and functioning. I think Ms. Evely said it best that, um, you know, when students are eating and have, you know, adequate food and, and, you know, it affects their learning. And so how can they do that without a wonderful staff keeping things going? So I appreciate you all and encourage you to keep up the good work. Thank you. And also, I also like to congratulate the basketball teams as well. Doing a wonderful job. Coach Neal and also Coach, uh, of the boys.
Then, uh, jumps.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Coach Debs and Coach Neal doing a wonderful job, and their staff as well. Each year do a wonderful job with the girls and the boys. And so we definitely commend them on a, a season well done. All right, on that note, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion, second, do we, all in favor? Oppose? Leaving adjourn.